This meeting is called to order. It's Tuesday, August 1st, 2017, 6:30 PM. We're here at the Palm Coast City Hall Community Wing for the regularly scheduled Palm Coast City Council meeting. Please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call, please.
Mayor Holland will be arriving late. Vice Mayor Nobiel.
Here.
Councilmember Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Here.
Councilmember Shipley.
Yeah.
Agenda item number one, minutes of the city council is July 18th and July 25th, 2017 meetings. Are there any comments or questions? Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Presentation. Presentation of the photo contest awards, Mr. Landon.
This is one of our annual events. It's very exciting. Cindy is off today, so Jason is going to handle it tonight. So Jason, take it from here.
Thank you so much. Jason Geraldo, Digital Communications Coordinator and also the leader of the Brand Plus team. So believe it or not, this is the fifth year of our annual photo contest. Time really does fly. And it's really become a family tradition, both here and throughout the city as far as employees as well. So we're just so excited to be able to present this tonight. We received hundreds of photos that showcase what make us special. The environment, our natural spaces, our community spirit, and of course, family fun. The goal is to build our community and give photographers an opportunity to share their talents while also providing the city with new photos used to promote the city and promote our beautiful community. So the photos that we get, we use to provide marketing materials, we do ads with them, things like that. But of course, also you see them hanging in our city hall. This year, we awarded a first, second, and third place award, as well as a best bird and best youth and honorable mentions. The contest received 391 photos that met the qualifications from 79 different photographers. And it's really amazing to see the talent that exists outside in the community. It's really always so stunning. So Mr. Nobiel, if you might, just assist me with presenting these awards this evening. Thank you. Want to call your name, if you could just come forward? And then also, if you haven't been here before the meeting started, if you want to meet me after these awards for photos outside. So our first place is Vicki Payne.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you. You'll stay here with us?
Congratulations. No, we'll do a photo outside. Thank you so much.
You'll do a photo at the end. Thank you.
Second place is Nikolai Savolidov.
Nikolai.
And Nikolai actually, Mr. Nobiel, you hand this to him too. Nikolai actually won a few other things, including, yeah, he won also best bird and best youth. So they're all there. Third place is Cindy Baumann. He had two as well.
Oh, Cindy.
Cindy here to sit there?
We'll make sure she gets those. I don't know if I can get a card. That might got lost.
Our best, this is the best bird from Nikolai. Our best youth category photographer, Zelia Burnett.
Zelia.
Honorable mention photographer William Clark. And I got out of order, so just give me a second. And that's actually an interesting thing, because it is the very first drone photo we've ever received.
Maybe he was on stage.
There he is. Is he not here this evening?
There's he again.
William Clark.
William? Here? Nope. We will make sure William gets it.
Next is photographer Sharon Beal.
Sharon.
Next honorable mention is Cindy Baumann.
Cindy Baumann.
Honorable mention to Teresa Johns.
Teresa?
And honorable mention to Charles Corcito.
Charles.
Also an honorable mention to photographer Joan Twing. And then again Nikolai with another honorable mention. We have a best bird honorable mention with Kelly Hay.
Kelly is not here today?
Another best bird honorable mention with Sally Crawford.
Sally.
And a best youth honorable mention with Garrett Hunter. We also received submissions from employees here for second and third place, as well as best bird and honorable mentions. The BAM team, the Boost All Morale team, actually participated in the judging. We had, let's see, six photographers and nearly 100 photos submitted. And you're going to hear a familiar name. Employee first place winner, Tom Hanson.
Those are all Tom?
Those are all Tom.
Those are all Tom?
Those are all Tom.
There he is. Good job, buddy. Thank you.
Our employee second place winner was Heather Priestapp. Our employee third place winner was Tom Hanson. Our employee best bird winner was Tom Hanson. One of our employee honorable mentions was Tom Hanson. An honorable mention goes to photographer Lucy Nabico. And another honorable mention to Lucy Nabico. An honorable mention to Tom Hanson.
Tom Hanson. Tom, you actually won something. Come on out.
Another one to Tom Hanson.
Tom Hanson.
Photographer Heather Priestapp.
Heather.
And photographer Rose Conceico.
Rose. All right. Well, we have them all here. We will make sure they get their awards. Are we done?
Yeah, we're done with presentations. Thank you, sir.
Good job. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, council.
We're going to move on to agenda item, am I at four?
Three.
Three. I'm sorry. Agenda item three, ordinance 2017 rezoning at 149 Lake Boulevard, Lakeview Boulevard from multifamily residential to single-family residential. Mr. Reishman.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is the second reading of a quasi judicial matter with the title. An ordinance to the city council, the city of Palm Coast, order providing for amendment official zoning map is established in section 2.06 of the city of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. This ordinance amends the official zoning map for 3.2 acres, more or less, of certain real property described as tax parcel ID number 71131, 7037ORPOA0070. And it's generally located between Lakeview Boulevard and Lewis Drive and being more particularly described in the attached exhibit A to this ordinance. Rzoning from multifamily residential 1, or MFR1, to single-family residential 2, or SFR2, and to that zoning district, providing for conflicts, for separability, and providing for effective date. Mr. Vice Mayor, as this is a quasi judicial matter, if there have been any ex parte communications since the first reading, those need to be disclosed at this time.
See? Reported. Okay. Any comments, questions? Move approval? Seconded? Well, we have public comments. Yes, but that's okay. That's all right. I'd like to open this for a public comment at this time. If anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, please step forward. Seeing no one, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number four, resolution approving application 3298, the final plat for Grand Landings Phase 3A. Mr. Landon.
City council, this is another phase in the Grand Landing development. It's moving right along, as I understand. Ida, I can't stall much longer. So Ida's going to handle this with the details. So take it from here, Ida.
Good evening. This is application 3298. It's Phase 3A subdivision for Grand Landings. In terms of location, this is south of State Road 100, south of the airport, and west of Seminole Woods Boulevard, and south of Grand Landings Boulevard, the existing subdivision. The future land use for this subdivision is residential. The zoning is master plan development, MPD. This is a depiction of the plat. There are 41 acres. All the lots conform to the land development code and the MPD specifications. The site development permit for this application was issued February of this year. The infrastructure is complete. Maintenance bond is required prior to final plat being recorded. Staff is recommending the adoption of Resolution 2017, approving the replat for Grand Landings Phase 3A, authorizing the mayor to execute the plat, subject to the condition of the city approving and accepting the required maintenance bond prior to final plat recordation. Jerry Finley is here, representing the applicant, if there are any questions in that.
Counsel, any questions, comments? No? At this time, I'd like to call any public participation on this ordinance, on this resolution item. Seeing none, back to the council for comments or motion.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? None. Motion passes. Thank you. That moves us to agenda item number five, a resolution approving a piggyback contract with express supply and approving a work order with Danella for Phase 2 of the Signal Optimization Project. Mr. Landon.
City council, this is, as the title says, Phase 2 of trying to address one of the most common problems or complaints we receive here in Palm Coast, and that is when you hit a signal, you can hopefully get through it a lot faster. So we started this last year with the backbone and the core, and we did 12, about 12 signals last year, and now we're proposing to do 22 more. So Sean's going to go through the details with you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Landon. Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I'm Sean Costelli, your city traffic engineer, and I'd like to present to you Phase 2 of our signal improvement project. So the objective today is to provide the city council with implementation costs for Phase 2 of this project and receive city council approval. Like all projects, we want to make sure that they all meet our, the objectives in the strategic action plan, and this one does specifically objective 1.1, 1.2, and 5.2. An overview of this project is, the purpose of this project from the get-go was to maximize our roadway capacity and make our roadway safer. So we did this, so we did this by taking a phased approach to implementing advanced traffic management system, which for short is ATMS. For Phase 1, which we did last year, we integrated 12 intersections and we completed that work. And for Phase 2, we plan on integrating 22 more. The work specifically in Phase 1, we were able to purchase and install the ATMS software and the hardware components. We got, we did fiber connectivity to 34 of our signalized intersections. We did installation of CCTV cameras and communication switches at 12 intersections. We did the creation of a small-scale traffic management center, which one is here at city hall, and the other one is over at Public Works. And we also purchased testing equipment to make sure that we maintain our traffic, I'm sorry, the vital traffic signal components. For this year, for this fiscal year 2017, these are the areas that we do plan on integrating our signals, specifically Beltair from Pine Lakes Parkway to Palm Coast Parkway westbound. There's five signals there. And then we got Beltair again, Parkway from East Hampton to Whiteview. There's four. State Road 100 from Beltair to I-95. You've got six. And Palm Coast Parkway from Pine Lakes Parkway to Corporate Drive and Clubhouse Drive to Palm Harbor Parkway. There's seven there. So in total, that's 22. Recommendations, we would like to, we recommend the approval of the following expenditures for Phase 2. Installation of CCTV cameras and communication switches at 22 intersections. The purchase of two new traffic cabinets and fiber connectivity at 10 intersections. This gives us a total expenditure of approximately $199,540.60. And as you can see here, we have a remaining budget of $296,910.98. So for our next step, with approval tonight, we will implement Phase 2. And for the next fiscal year in 2019, we will, we'll put those into our five-year CIP, but Phase 3, which we plan on doing next year, will be the integration of 13 additional traffic signals. And for Phase 4, it's going to be, to be determined as our fiber network is expanded. At this time, does anyone have any questions?
Counsel, questions, comments?
Sean, I have one question. If we, we do a study ahead of time to see what, where we want to put the lights, obviously because there's a problem, our timing issues, do we then go back and see if it made a difference after we've done it?
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did. We actually have been testing it out over the last six months, really. And we've, we found that where we've, where we've installed it, that we have seen, number one, a reduction in complaints. Number two, we've seen a reduction in travel times in where we've done it. And we've also, and number three, we've been able to actually timer lights based on the conditions that are actually out there. So for example, you know, right now where we have it is pretty much between Florida Park Drive and Cypress Point Parkway on Palm Coast Parkway. And what we've seen is that we've seen an overall reduction in travel times between those two points. And like I said, you know, a lot less complaints. And when we have had issues and stuff, like the example that I cited last week, you know, we, I had a resident who was calling and was saying, hey, you know, there's a problem here and stuff, but every time I would look through the camera, it wouldn't show up. So finally, there was a time where the gentleman called and he said, well, look, the problem is specifically happening between like 11:30 and 12:30. So I was able to look, and sure enough, it came up. You know, it was a problem. But the nice thing is, is that we didn't actually have to go out there and watch it ourselves. And once we found it, we were able to make adjustments and changes to it literally within five minutes. So, you know, so we were able to fix the issue, and it's, and it's worked out, you know, for us remarkably well. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One question.
Yes, sir.
When you study the travel times, is that, do you do both off and heavy traffic times?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, we look at the whole gamut, you know, of when it's out there, but we specifically look at the heavier times, you know, because generally, once you get down to the off-peak times, it's been my experience here and in other places, that traffic will generally move well during the off-peak times. It's during the peak times that you really need to go out there and check and make sure that it's working.
Good. Thanks. Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. The lights that are being added in this phase, I guess this is a two-part question. There is fiber already extended to those intersections, and there was no backhaul required?
No, there wasn't.
Okay. So that 55K was for the hookup from the endpoint, splicing it into the camera?
Yeah.
My other question is, do you foresee any issues scaling with the additional load of having the cameras on your small-scale traffic management system?
No, we, we set it up from the get-go to be able to handle it. We, before we did all this, we actually went out and we got advice from FDOT and from other municipalities that had implemented the same thing. So we made sure that whatever we did from the start, you know, that it would support what we were ultimately trying to do. I mean, our network right now, actually, the first thing that everybody told us was, do not share a server with anybody else. Like, this is a standalone network, you know, so this has to work on its own and stuff. And so we did that. And so, you know, so we made sure that we got the right kind of server and stuff that would be able to handle this whole thing. And sure enough, you know, it's been working well, and as we scale it up, it's, it should continue to work, and, you know, we should be fine. So, you know, so we planned for, we planned this from the get-go.
Excellent.
Question that you brought now, that I just want to piggyback on that now. Do we have redundancies? And what would happen if that server or servers went down? It wouldn't affect the traffic signals?
No. No, because, no, because what happens is, is that when you, the timing plans all get downloaded to the controller itself, you know, like, we just, we're able to monitor them and stuff, and it, and it keeps a copy of, of pretty much, what is it? The, it keeps a copy of everything that's in those controllers.
On the server. As a backup.
Yeah. So if, if that were to go down, the traffic lights are just going to continue to...
So it's like a remote control on the TV. Once I change channels, if the batteries die, the channel still works?
Exactly.
Okay. Anybody else? I'd like to open this up for public participation. If you would like to speak, please come forward. You'll have three minutes, and I hear it's firm.
By any chance, could this run out of capacity? Are you taking into effect, every time you add more on to it, can the, can it, can it handle it? Or do you have to keep increasing or separate, for separate zones? In other words, each zone has its own maximum capacity or minimum capacity? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Seeing none. Sean, do you answer that? Capacity, what's our, what's our next level of increase?
I mean, if he's, if he's referring to just being able to monitor more, then, then we should be fine, you know, because like I said, from the get-go, you know, we made sure that whatever we, we got could be, you know, would be sufficient, you know, for what our, at least our, our potential build-out will be for now. And, I mean, because right now, we only, I want to say we maintain and own, well, we maintain about 60 traffic signals and stuff. So, I mean, that'll more than handle what we have and stuff. And even if it, and even if it increases to maybe 100, you know, which we hope not, but, you know, it'll still be able to manage that.
Super. Back to the council for any questions, comments, or a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number six, resolution approving a master service agreement with Transmap Inc. for pavement management program. Mr. Landon.
Counsel, this is a program that really puts us into more modern times with determining what streets need to be paved, what's the best maintenance item or process for those. You know, when we first became a city, we were, had a lot of bad roads, and then this is something that the voters actually approved, a half-cent sales tax for 10 years to resurface each one of them. Well, now it's, there, some of those are starting to deteriorate again. So instead of us just looking at them and saying, which one do we need to maintain? This is a master plan, so we actually have a five-year plan, we can budget for it, et cetera. It's really kind of exciting to see us advance our technology in this way. So Sean, please introduce a guest and give the details.
Well, thank you. Again, Sean Costelli, your city traffic engineer, and I have Howard, let him introduce himself.
Good evening. My name is Howard Luxoy with Transmap Corporation.
Evening.
And today, we're, we're going to present to you the pavement and roadway asset management project. So the purpose of this project is, is to develop a pavement and roadway asset management program, which allows the city to best utilize city funds to maintain our roadways. As I stated in the previous presentation, we make sure that all of our projects meet our objectives in our strategic action plan. This one is specifically objectives 1.1 and 5.2. So our current procedure, right now, the city maintains 1,186.2 lane miles of roadway. We resurface, meaning mill and overlay, 20 to 30 miles of roadway per year, so that's only 2% of what we actually own. And the city utilizes resurfacing, again, mill and overlay as the only maintenance option at this time. The work that's performed is done by Public Works, specifically our lead signal technician, who spends approximately 240 to 320 hours rating our roadways, which comes out to about six to eight weeks of actual work. And Public Works tends, just performs a visual windshield inspection, and priorities are based on available funding for the year. So what we would like to do is that we would actually like to create a formal pavement management plan. So with this, we would use a professional service to create a pavement condition index, which is a PCI. And this would be utilizing ASTM standards, which means American Society for Testing Materials. With this, we'll be able to establish a PCI standard for residential collector and arterial roadways, and develop a long-term capital plan for maintaining these assets, utilizing more than just mill and overlay. The benefits of this are going to be better data collection, which will lead to utilizing other pavement maintenance techniques and tools. The creation of a GIS shapefile that identifies all the roadway ratings, establishing a standard for maintaining all of our residential collector and arterial roadways, again, establishing a long-term cost for maintaining these roadways, and developing a long, a long-range plan that we would put into our capital plan, utilizing the various techniques such as rejuvenation, which you can see here, comes out to about $6,000 per lane mile, micro-surfacing, which is approximately $25,000 per lane mile. Mill and overlay, which is what we do now, and you can see here, is about $55,000 per lane mile, and a roadway reconstruction, hopefully, you know, we don't get to that point, but you can see what the cost of that is, between 350 and $500,000 per lane mile. So for this project, we, we realized very quickly that we needed a consultant, so we sent their request for qualifications, and we received seven submittals. Five firms were shortlisted and presented to a team of city staff members. As you can see here, the following criteria was used: experience, project understanding, the project team, schedule and availability, and location. And the consultant that we ended up choosing was Transmap, so I'll turn it over to Howard and let him go.
All right. Thank you for having me. Thank you for having me. Unfortunately, Craig Schorling, my vice president, is not here, but I, again, am Howard Luxoy. I'm the president and CEO of TransMap. So, you either get one of us and we're kind of both the same guys, as Sean will tell you. Recent Florida experience, we've been working in the state of Florida since probably around 1998, 1999. One of our first big projects was on the west coast of Florida, Hillsborough County, and we've kind of worked up and down the west coast and worked up and down the east coast of Florida and had lots of successful projects. So, you can see this shortlist here, it's by no means all of them, but it's got a good group. Boca Raton, we're still actually wrapping up. Bartow, we're still kind of finishing with. City Benito Springs, we're doing a little bit of stuff for them. A few of these are multi-customers where they've used us multiple times, which is always a, an honor. Our solution depends on technology. We've got a technical solution that was spun off of Ohio State University to use cameras and lasers to measure infrastructure and put together criteria that Sean mentioned in the ASTM, using those ASTM functions to figure out what the state of the network is, what the state of the roadway is, and what needs to be done in order to generate the dollars to keep us out of that reconstruction number, which is very high, and keep us more in the cheaper fixes to extend the perpetual life of that pavement. So, we put together this Phase 1, which is the pavement condition and the master plan. This image you're seeing here is the city of Clearwater. If you've ever been to Clearwater, they've got that nice fancy traffic circle there that is, is, is right there where the beach is, and you can see those boxes. That's pretty much a, a project-level inspection that shows you, those red boxes are areas where there's lots of cracking, and the green boxes, which you see, there's a lot of them, means that, hey, there's really not much going on there, so let's not put effort into green boxes, let's go look at yellows and reds and oranges. Everything we do, we put online, so we're big ArcGIS folks, ESRI guys, so we've been partners with ESRI for, we just got our 20-year award, so we've been partners with them for a long time. We put everything up, we put all the multimedia up, we put all the plans and all the information that Sean's going to need, it's going to be in his ArcGIS online, and we help the city migrate it to their solution as well. The whole concept of pavement management is really trying to preserve our pavements and, and come up with a perpetual pavement that allows us to put inexpensive treatments down, to extend the lives of this pavement, to keep ourselves away from, hey, once it's degraded to a 30 or 40, there's really nothing we could do. If we can keep doing the 60s and 70s and 75s and we can keep it in that area, it's proven with the economics that if you put that money in, you can actually extend the life of this pavement essentially perpetually, and it is cheaper in the long run than going down the path of reconstruction. So, here you can see some, some different scenarios that show you the money values versus the pavement condition index, the PCI. PCI is essentially the way we grade each segment of your roadway, intersection to intersection. It'll get a PCI number, the PCI number then you can use to rank and you can look into the distress and you can say, "How would this get fixed versus this?" And the software that we use is called MicroPaver, and MicroPaver is an American Public Works Association software, and that software helps us optimize budgets and all the funding associated with different assets. So, you'll see the, the different colors. MicroPaver is all about red, greens, and yellows. Obviously, reds are bad and greens are good. Budget optimization, so taking a look at the whole network, all of the, the segments that you guys would have, and looking at what it comes in at, as Sean said, the collectors, the arterials, and the secondary roads are going to have thresholds that you guys are going to set, and then there's going to be dollars associated with those thresholds. Phase 1 deliverables, so we're going to put together a full PCI, full IRI, rut cross-slope, we're going to have reports of a five to 10-year. The reason we kind of talk about a 10-year is because some of the treatments that we'll recommend have a five to seven-year life, so if you don't really look at kind of a 10-year window, you don't get a chance to see the, the raising of the network in those optimizations, but traditionally, a five-year plan is what you start with and then you peek into the 10-year. Full reporting, all of it in paper, in maps, we're going to give everything online, all the GIS data, everything's going to be there, and you guys are going to have the ability to consume it from our site and locally within the city on their site. In addition to kind of Phase 1-type stuff, Phase 2 is the additional roadway infrastructure that you guys have, so some pathway stuff and some roadway assets. Back a couple of years ago, we were challenged by our customers and they said, "Hey, instead of bringing that big TransMap van, what if you guys could put something in a case and ship it down on the airplane and mount it on a gator and run some trails for us, or put it on a motorcycle or whatever to get it off the roadway? Would you guys be interested in that?" And we're technology guys, so we'd love to do that. So, about two years ago, we started mapping trails and off-roadway infrastructure, bike paths, and ADA compliance and, and all that kind of stuff that's associated with the pathway and the roadway assets. I think Sean's also talking about doing striping and additional information, but in this dataset, there is all kinds of information that will be delivered to him: sidewalk information, signage information, curb information, ADA, all that kind of stuff will be there. So, the Phase 2 deliverables would be the roadway assets, the pathway assets, maps, reports, statistics, image deliverables, compliance work, and some GIS data.
That's you. All right, well, thank you very much. All right, so, so here's our proposed plan and the costs that, that are associated with that. For budget year 2017, we had budgeted $150,000 for this, and we plan on doing this project in two phases. So, Phase 1 is just going to be the pavement condition survey, which, which will be approximately And then, well, and then in the next budget year, when we have another $150,000 set aside for this, we'll complete Phase 1 by doing the master plan creation for the, for the actual roadways themselves. And then Phase 2 is going to be for the striping and the sidewalk and pathway inventory and So, so what we are looking today, council action, is to approve a work order in the amount of $210,468, $69.58 with TransMap for the development of a new pavement and roadway asset management program.
Thank you. Oh, you're not done?
No, I'm fine. Questions?
Questions, council?
I, I do have a question, and I apologize, I wasn't there for the workshop, so I wasn't able to ask questions, but.
It's fine.
With, right now, the, whatever you're going to use for the product that you said kind of goes in between, where you wouldn't, it would kind of be like a fixer-upper type thing. We have people right now that complain that we use, like, not best quality to fix holes and ditches, and then it just has to be repaired over and over. Is, is that going to be the same way with this product?
There's actually multiple products and stu-, you know, and there's actually multiple treatments and stuff, and it just depends on the condition of the pavement that's going to determine what, what treatment is going to be used and stuff. So, for example, for a lot of our roads that have been paved, you know, within the last five years, you know, we, and as long as there, there's nothing, you know, seriously wrong with them, as long as there's no big cracks or anything, or potholes and stuff, then we would utilize a, a rejuvenator and, you know, so that way, we make sure that the, that the asphalt, you know, stays flexible, you know, because that's what asphalt is, you know, it's a flexible pavement. And I know, even though we don't have a freeze thaw here in Florida, you know, we do have heat, and we have a lot of heat, and unfortunately, it does, you know, bake the roadway and stuff, so that does cause a lot of degradation in our roadways and stuff. Now, once it goes a little bit lower, depending on the type of street that it is, then we can look at different, at different, at different treatment types for that. So, for example, you know, the low-volume, you know, residential streets, you know, like the ones that we actually all live off of and stuff, you know, they don't always need to be milled and repaved, you know? You can always do like a micro, you know, a Cape Seal with a micro-surface on it and stuff, and that'll give you another, you know, 10 to 15 years of life on that roadway and stuff, so, you know? But then, you go to the roads like Beltair, you know, Rimfire, Palm Coast Parkway, Matanzas, those roads, unfortunately, because of the amount of traffic that those roads hold, you know, on them, those are the type of roads that regardless, we will have to, to mill and resurface, you know, when it's time to take care of those roads. So, I hope I answered your question.
So, I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Right now, so our guys go out and it, whatever you said, it takes six to eight weeks of work is what you said it would come to.
Yes, ma'am.
To find out all the roads in Palm Coast, and then we have a system where we know what our budget is and we, we put as many roads as we can to fit that budget.
Yes, ma'am.
How is this going to be different, where we already know what our budget is and whatever your company comes up with might be different than what we have in the budget?
Um, the best way to.
Might be a Chris Quinn question, I'm not sure.
No, the best way, I mean, from our standpoint, is, is that, is that this, this will allow us to figure out what actually needs to be done. So, you know, so not every road out there needs to be repaved, you know? Like I said, you know, we can do a micro-surface, you know, we could do another treatment and stuff on that road to give it that life and stuff, and unfortunately, this type of work is very specialized. It is, I mean, like, when, when we were, when staff was doing their, their research, you know, we found out that pretty much all the municipalities out there, our size and larger, they actually have staff that's just dedicated to doing pavement maintenance, nothing else. I mean, and that's it, you know, they go around and they actually have testing equipment and all this other stuff, and they utilize that to actually rate the roadways. We don't have that. So, so right now, we're, we're not, we're not entirely going blind and stuff, but we're, but we're having to use our best judgment to see what really needs to be fixed, you know? And where, if you get someone, where if you get folks like Howard and TransMap, they actually, they actually know this stuff, you know, they actually know what they're doing, they actually understand what needs to be fixed, what's the prop, what's the proper treatment, what is, what constitutes, you know, like a roadway needing to really be fixed, you know? So, I mean, I mean, they can see stuff, you know, if there's a certain type of, of crack in the roadway, they'll know that, hey, this is, this crack, you know, really means that, that you're, that you have a structural deficiency in the roadway itself, so you need to kind of fix this, you know?
So, let me, so I think what this is going to do, just to summarize, is it's going, and you correct me if I'm wrong, of course, jump right in, but it's going to, it's not going to change the budget. We're still going to spend the same amount of dollars, but it's going to be better targeted at streets that require it more and hopefully help us to get more out of our buck. So, instead of, you know, tearing up a road, it might not need to be torn up, maybe a micro-surface. So, we'll have, you know, hopefully, the same dollars, like, it's not going to cause us to have any more dollars or try to spend any more dollars, but we'll be able to utilize those dollars better, hopefully. That's what I'm hoping for.
Again, I apologize because I wasn't at the workshop, I couldn't ask any questions, but.
No, it's fine.
Thank you.
Anything else? I'd like to open this up now to the public for public comment. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Carol Zieger, Palm Coast. Most of us have moved down from the door. Okay, and we're used to the heave and so forth. What they're, because of our technology has been increasing every day and so forth, driving around and looking at the roads, like he said, all the hours they spend doing that, you do not find the cracks, and especially if you're just driving around in the trucks and so forth. Their technology will show us where it is. We've already invested in several big roads that we had resurfaced at that big cost. This is like sealing, and it's not going to be a patch here, a patch there, we seal the whole thing. So, I, I approve for you guys to approve it, and it's money worth, instead of, because we've, we've done so much, you know, the extension of Old King going out towards Matanza, south of Old King that we just resurfaced, to keep those from deteriorating, we need to make sure that they're maintained. And the widening of the north part of Old King, the same thing, and so forth, so, you get my nod. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Robert McCall, Palm Coast. Four months ago, I came to the city council and I showed them and told them about certain intersections at that time were only small crevices in the road as you made turns. Well, somebody in the city went out and started filling the crevices up with concrete. So, I said, "Okay." So, I went to the city engineer and I brought him samples of four different intersections, all basically in the R section, and I showed him where these, these were. "Okay, we'll, we'll investigate them." Came back again to the meeting. I was told by the council, "Go talk to the head of the road department and we'll get these situations corrected." Again, nothing happened. Now, take a ride on Old King's Road and make a right on, I believe it's Palm, Royal Palm where the new traffic light is. If you cut that corner too sharp, especially at night, you're going to lose half of your front end on a car. The other intersection that you could lose a small child in is on the corner of Beltair heading south on White Year. There's also sections in the R section that have been repaired two, three, possibly even four times a year for the last six or seven years. Now, this is all great to say that we're going to go out and fix the roads, but wouldn't the city be responsible if they're not fixing these corners, because nobody has yet gone out to determine whether or not the radius is correct, whether the road condition is correct? And I keep getting to, "Well, it's the buses, it's the trucks." No, it's not the buses and the trucks, it's the cars and the road, and they're not filling them up. I mean, I brought to the city engineer four Ziploc baggies with material that the city is wasting their time and their money, just keep dumping it in, keep dumping it in, and the cars come by and the stuff goes scattered over, because if you go out on the corner of Rimfire and Rickabacka, you'll see it laying in the street. Well, I think we're just wasting more money. So, let's fix the corners first before the city starts getting lawsuits for people whose cars are damaged because the city is not repairing the turns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I just have, I have several questions. One of them is, so people will understand exactly what system we're talking about and how it works. See, we know that he's going to go out and he's going to map and, and set up data of this street, of that block, of this, that, and the other. How does he arrive at that conclusion, is my question? Thank you.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I just was wondering, if this survey, as they do it, and look at the different cracks and sizes and everything, is it going to determine whether or not some traffic gets too heavy for that road? Should there be a weight limit done to the road? Just, just asking.
Thank you. Next speaker.
John Nett, Palm Coast. I heard some terms of art, micro-resurfacing and rejuvenators. I just want to caution council that early on in our road program, we tried something called chip seal. And if there was something that we did that the public didn't like, that was it. The damage that we did to driveways, private driveways, and so on and so forth was immeasurable. Let's be certain, as we look at these options, what we're choosing is not sub- Let's be certain, as we look at these options, what we're choosing is not something that's going to bring the public out with pitchforks and torches. No mic, no chip seal, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the, well, let me get some of these questions answered first. So, so how do we determine the level of need? Is that in the algorithm inside the software?
Yeah, so what my company does is we go out with the technology and we make measurements. So every crack in the system, every piece of roadway that you guys have, both directions, all the travel lanes that are out there, we run this fancy van with lasers and cameras and the lasers measure the depths and the widths and the lengths of all the cracks, right? Well, all that data goes into an Army Corps of Engineers tool that 625 cities across the U.S. use called MicroPaver. And MicroPaver takes all that data in, it takes all of the traffic data, it will take in what the average daily traffic is, it will take in, is it a collector road, what's the condition, or how was the road built, what's the surface type, is it a concrete road, is it an asphalt road, what's the base, you know, that kind of stuff. All that information goes into this big software tool that is open source, that's run by Army Corps of Engineers, they did the intellectual property, but American Public Works Association is the, is the partner that we use that brings that in, and these guys will get the software, they'll get the ability to answer the questions, and MicroPaver says, okay, if you don't like chip seal, which that's not the first time we've ever heard that chip seal is not very welcome, well, if you notice, Sean didn't put any chip seal in because he already knows that that's something that we don't wanna do. Well, MicroPaver has a hundred of them in there, a hundred choices, and MicroPaver will say, well, tell us what you like, what is acceptable to you and your constituents, and then you start making decisions based on what is really going on with the road. And the gentleman with the curves, well, those curves are, we're gonna have those measurements in there, the cracks are gonna be measured, we're gonna be able to tell you where the failed sections are, and we're gonna also then be able to tell you how much it costs to fix the failed sections. And we'll be able to say, if you use this, it costs this, if you use this, it costs this, if you, and the current program that you're doing is, is only mill and repave, right? Well, that's kind of the 1965 method of doing, now, it's a great method, but unfortunately it's very expensive, right? It really is a beautiful surface when it's finished, but it's very costly. And a micro surface, you, my wife couldn't tell the difference and she lives with me, right? So, you know, you, you say to yourself, does that matter? Well, let's put the right treatment for the right distress that's on this road and let's try to optimize. And that's what this is all about.
And the stress is determined by FDOT's traffic?
Yes, ASTM. So FDOT uses the ASTM standards, we measure, you know, the lengths and the widths and the depths and the type of cracks and where they are in the pavement, all that kind of stuff matters, right? So those are all the standards that we follow.
Super. All right. Council, any further questions, comments, or motion? That move, we approve?
I can.
Approval, uh, we got a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number seven, resolution approving a master service contract with Billy Casper Golf Incorporated for golf course maintenance at the Palm Harbor Golf Course. Mr. Landon.
City council knows a few months ago, we have decided to try a little different approach at both managing our tennis center and our golf course. Currently at the golf course, we have Kemper Sports, it's a golf course management company that's been out there managing the course ever since it's been open, but as, as a city course. We have decided to take over the management ourselves, but also contracting out with a couple of private companies for the actual ground maintenance, which is very specialized, and then the food service, which cities does not do. So we were hoping to have the ground maintenance contract completed, but we're still have some details of legal eagles are working out, so, but we are trying to move forward quickly because the, the time for us to take over is coming. I asked Alex to go ahead and make his presentation tonight because we're getting a lot of questions, a lot of rumors, so we thought it'd be good to have Alex go over what the plan is and then we will bring back the final contracts for both food services and, and ground maintenance.
So no action on this?
No, no action on this one at this time. Alex, if you'll take it from here, please.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, council, Alex Boyer, Park District Director. As Mr. Landon said, we're gonna talk a little bit, just about the transition for the golf course and give you a little update. So today we're just gonna talk over a few things. First thing is an actual operation plan that we kind of discussed last time, but we'll go over it again. With that is the golf operations aspect, the maintenance operations aspects, and then the food and beverage part of that. With that, we'll talk a little bit about our procurement that we went through for both maintenance operations and food and beverage and talk a little bit about the transition since we are coming up. So with our golf course operational plan, we are gonna change the structure a little bit. The way that it's gonna work now is the golf manager is now gonna be a city employee, which is Tim Spangler, he was present at the workshop and you all were introduced to him. He's actually gonna be the focal point now at the golf course and will be a city employee, so everything that goes on at the golf course will be managed now by the city, which is great for us. The golf operations staff will now be city employees, so your cart attendants, your starters, your facility clerks, those sort of things will all now become city employees. We are also adding some additional account support through finance that will be city employees and then also getting our own point-of-sale system and T-sheet system. We are going to be going, we did go out for a maintenance operation with a third-party vendor, that will actually be managed and contracted through our golf manager position, so everything that's going on with the course maintenance will actually still be running through us, the city, through the golf manager. And the same concept with food and beverage, it'll be a third-party vendor, it will be contracted out and managed by the general manager that is a city employee. This is kind of a layout of the now course operations. The golf manager is the top of the pyramid, it is set up to where it is a city employee that will run and manage all the understandings of the day-to-day operation as well as the third-party vendors. Under them is the city operations staff, which once again is our cart attendants, facility clerks and starters, and to the left and right of those is our cough, our, excuse me, our course maintenance, which will be Billy Casper, and then our food and beverage third-party, which we are still working on that contract now. As we discussed, our maintenance operation is very important to us, we did go out to bid for that. We actually had nine submissions through that process. After several evaluations, we did come down to our top three choices. We did bring all three top choices back in for another round of interviews. From that process, we did rank everyone. Billy Casper was our top-ranked bid in that process. We didn't just go from the mindset of price alone, we did look at their operational plan, their structure, supporting staff and those sort of things. They were just a little bit over the lowest price, but at the same time, they did have the best option for us going forward. Some of the things that we were really focused on with this was that Billy Casper was actually, has a lot of satellite locations here in Florida. Their agronomist actually lives in St. Augustine, so what's nice is anytime he comes on site, it's considered a local visit. So we're not charged in any way, but it's really nice to have someone 20 minutes down the road, especially when it comes to an agronomist that we need in order to maintain our course. They did have a strong operation plan. The other nice thing about this process is with them having other locations within Florida, if a piece of machinery would go down and employee would quit on them, they have easy access to new people that can come and help on the spot. Where in before, just for example, when we had the hurricane, it was a lot of the community members actually helping us get the golf course up, not the actual management company. So this is a, a great opportunity that we're looking at, that they'd be able to help and support in this fashion. And they were also willing to evaluate the current staff, they are very excited to work something out with the current superintendent, so that was a positive as well to be able to maintain the current staff that's out there and not necessarily talk about losing jobs that we currently have employed. So for our food and beverage, we didn't have as many, we had two people that responded. Through the process, through the background check, actually our second applicant was disqualified because they actually did not pass the reference check by Morningstar. Some of the things that they submitted to be an operational background was not actually what it was when we called the number. So from that process, Green Lion was our top choice. Green Lion is actually from the Golden Lion, they're actually making a, a separate LLC corporation, but that is one of the positives that we found with them. With using Golden Lion, we're gonna have local location support, their main restaurant is just right across the bridge, so if they need anything, additional staffing, supplies, those sort of things, it's very close. Once again, they had a strong operational plan, we're very excited to have that type of venture there at the golf course. And then, of course, they have a long-time business in Flagler Beach that I think is very reputable, that we hope that they can bring that success to the golf course. So some of the ways that we were working on with the food and beverage right now is a couple different rates with our lease agreement. The first one is a lease fee component, this is based off of just the premises, so your utilities, your supplies, those sort of things, that is gonna be a base rate lease component. And then we're gonna have an, excuse me, a capital improvement recovery process. We did determine there's some things that we need to upgrade, fix within the area over there, and we're doing this in the understanding that we would do this for any venture, not necessarily just for them. These are improvements, it's only gonna benefit the food and beverage operation at the golf course overall, but we're gonna lump that into a five-year plan, so they will pay a monthly fee in order to cover the cost of that, which will be paid off in their first five-year lease agreement. So just kind of going a little bit on the transition because we are getting close, we are kind of within the next 30-day time limit, we have already given Kemper their 30-day contract notice. We are currently working with Morningstar on our final transition looks, which involves the city employee GM, which is on-site now, he's actually been at the golf course for over two weeks, working off of his iPad on the patio deck, since he doesn't have any office space and he's enjoying every minute of it. We are actually starting next week the interviews to fill city positions, we've collected all resumes and we're just gonna actually start bringing people in next week. We are finalizing the operation budget now that we're getting the contracts in for both food and beverage and for the operation plans for maintenance. We're finalizing a marketing plan, we are also finalizing internal controls that we're working on, and then we're in the last steps of finalizing our point-of-sale and T-sheet system that we will be rolling out as we take on operations. We are also looking at the golf courts, they are getting close to the end of their lifecycle and something that we probably need to look into as well going forward of how we're going to be able to operate those. So we actually will take over management August 28th. The food and beverage operations will work in a small capacity as we work on some of the transitions, some of the upgrades that we're doing to it, and they are looking to have a full operation process early fall. And with that said, do you guys have any questions?
Council, any questions, comments?
I do. Billy Casper, is that someone that we had applied before? He was the group that applied before?
Right, so when we, we were going out for full management where they were going to manage the whole course, not just the grounds maintenance.
Okay, I thought the name sounded familiar. The other thing is I'm very happy that Green Lion, Golden Lion is gonna be there closer to my home. Are we doing anything with the retail there? Did they say anything about the retail, the store that's over there?
You mean for golf operations?
Uh huh.
So we'll still have the pro shop, we are actually working on how we're gonna set that up and spacing, we're actually looking at possibly expanding it as well, just because there is not a lot of local vendors that sell clubs and those sort of things. I know, Tim, we actually talked about the other day about some opportunities of, of doing more with the pro shop.
But that would be managed by the city?
Yes.
That would be part of the city's operation?
No other questions?
Just one question regarding the staff. So I heard current staff, we're trying to, or, or at least Billy Casper is trying to use the people we have already, are they our employees or?
So no, actually, they are Kemper employees.
Okay.
They have been told that they do not have any form of employment after our contract ends. So they have been given authorization to pursue other jobs elsewhere, which Billy Casper is, actually should be reaching out this week to those employees. What they said is they would do a six-month evaluation period on most of them, just because there's not a lot of people that you're gonna go out and find and fill positions right this very second. And they've been working the course well, those are one of the highlights that I think we've heard, is, you know, the superintendent's done a great job in those sort of things. So I think they wanna maintain that for at least the first six months, see how it goes, and then see how they work out as their employees.
I would like to piggyback on that, there are some of the Kemper employees that will now be city employees, you know, your, your frontline at the help desk.
Okay, okay. So those will just transition?
Yes, we, and Alex and his staff will go through a interview process where they've gotta meet our criteria.
Right.
But they will get preference if, if they meet our, meet our criteria.
That was my second question. Good, thank you. Would like to open it, open this agenda item up to the public if anybody would like to make any comments or questions, please come forward. Come on down.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. I was doing mine until I heard that we have- Currently, city employees who are gonna possibly lose their job once we sign a contract with Billy Casper Golf? That, that's kind of like a slap in our city employees' face because we're supposed to be taking care of our own people. So why would we go out and hire a stranger or somebody from Kemper when we have city employees that have been doing the job, they know the people, they know the guests? That's my first question. My second question is, if my, the chart was right, we're gonna pay Billy Casper Golf $627,000 to maintain the golf course. Okay, does anybody have any idea what the figures were at the end of the day for 2016? How did we make out financially? Now, I understand it's not a moneymaker, I understand it's an amenity, we've been through this round and round before. But we're gonna pay, Kemper was beating us unmerciful, unmerciful, for the amount of times we lost, every year we lost money when Kemper ran. Now Billy Casper's gonna come in and he's gonna run it, but it's gonna, we're gonna be in a hole for $627,000 before the first guy gets on the links to play golf. I wanna know, does the city have any idea how much we've made profit at the end of the day in 2016, or how much we've made in the first six months of 2017 compared to, because we gotta come up with $627,000 at the end of the year to pay Billy Casper Golf? So unless we're making million-plus dollars, we're still gonna be back in the hole and we're gonna be, instead of, we're paying, instead of we're gonna be in the hole to Kemper, now we're gonna be in a bigger hole to Billy Casper. And we all understand that the golf sport is losing interest. So are we gonna have to raise the rates? Well, if you raise the rates, people are gonna say, I'm not going to play there, I'll go play someplace else. So we might wanna think about how much we're actually gonna be in the hole at the end of 2017. That's what I wanna know, how much we anticipate being in the hole?
Thank you. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll start with, we don't have city employees there right now, so, so nobody at the golf course is working for the city currently. They, they work for Kemper, and we are trying, what we're working out is getting them from Kemper into the city employment, things we're gonna be working on, and Billy Casper on, on his maintenance. All Billy Casper is doing is the grounds maintenance, they are not running the golf course like Kemper was, so 2016 costs, anybody, Mr.? I, I just wanna say Chris, but I, I forgot Mister, call Mister.
Call it Mister Quinn.
Quinn, that's it, holy mackerel. Bet you called old age.
The, the total cost for the golf course in 2016 September was about 1.6 million.
Right.
On about 1.3 million in revenue, so the actual operating loss was a little over 300,000 last-
300,000 last year. This year, to be honest, we're probably on a similar trajectory for, for September 30th of this year, but that's what this process is trying to change that.
Right, good, thank you. And I think that was it. But the, the point is that 600,000, we, we were already spending that. That's, it's not new money. It's, we were just paying the employees for Kemper to maintain and the equipment and all that, so, so this is not a new cost, this is just us taking over the cost in hopes of bringing those costs down to cut back at the end of the year. Hopefully, the word you used, profit, and we get to that point someday, but not today. No, sir, not right now. Maybe you could bring it up at the, at the end. Bring it back to the council, questions, comments, motion? Yes, Mr. Landon.
This one we're not ready for.
We're not ready, that's right.
That's right. Apologize for that. We were hoping to be and, but we would like it to be finalized and have everybody.
Yes, and it's a good thing I asked you before, so, just so I wouldn't remember.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to move to agenda item number eight, resolution approving the nuisance abatement initial assessment, Mr. Landon.
Well, this is also an annual process. Basically, the, the background is, is that, you know, we have certain standards. Lots of times it's mowing grass, maybe others some maintenance on, on private property. And if you don't meet those standards and you get a notice from code enforcement, go through a legal process, it's, we have state and local laws we have to follow. If the property owner ignores those notices and does not take care of their property, such as mowing the grass, then what the city does is hires a private contractor to go on the private property to, to fix the violation. We then send that property owner a bill that is, you know, generated from that, that private contractor, and they have the option of either paying it or not, because we can't force them to. But those that pay, we're done. Those that don't pay, then we place a lien on the property. And annually, we've found that it's a lot more efficient if we apply that to their tax bill. And we have the ability by law to apply it to their tax bill. But first, we have to go through a two-step notice process, and this is the first step. It's a preliminary list of properties that we're proposing to apply these costs to the taxpayers for taking care of private property to their tax bill. People still have the chance of, after they, if they want to look at the list and see their name on it, their property on it, then they can take care of it, and then we'll take them off of the final list. But in a few weeks, you'll get a final list, and then when you approve the final list, then that is then transmitted to the Flagler County prop, tax collector, and she places it on the appropriate property tax bill, so that the city gets reimbursed and the taxpayers don't pay the ultimate cost. So this is the, you have to have public hearing, you have to get the opportunity for the public to comment on this. It's a fairly standard process for us, but we do require the, are required to have the public comment period. And once again, this is preliminary. It will come back to you as final in a, in a few weeks.
Any comments, questions, council? Seeing none, like to open this up to the public, any comments or questions in regard to agenda item number eight? Seeing no one, are we taking action on this?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So if there's any other questions, comments, or motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Move, motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This item is approved, passes. We now move to our consent agenda. Council, is there any item nine, 10, or 11 you'd like to remove for comments?
I, I had a question about item number nine.
Okay, nine? We'll remove it. Public, any item, any agenda item you'd like removed from the consent agenda? No, item number nine is removed. Can I get a motion on items, agenda items 10 and 11?
Move items 10 and 11 for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda items 10 and 11 pass. I now like to open agenda item number nine. Mr. Landon, do you have anything you want to start with that, or just?
During the workshop, we, I think we explained that we own property just to the north of our public works facility on US-1, but it's actually across the street, the, the access street there. What this does is swaps that property for property immediately to the south, which would be a lot more efficient to extend our facility as we're growing. It's approximately the same acreage, and it is really just kind of a fair swap. They're getting our property and we're getting their property. And there is the easement that is on the south side of the property we're receiving, so that they have access to US-1, to additional property to the west. I believe, Mr. Cuff, you, you pointed out at workshop that there was an issue with that. We think we've taken care of that.
That was my question. I, it looked like we had when I looked through the agenda.
Yeah, we, it was a good catch, and, and we, we had a couple of eyes put on it, but maybe attorney could address what was changed.
Right after the meeting, I got with Jose with staff and, and explained to him that you're concerned, Councilmember Cuff. And as you can see from the update from the workshop, changes were made, not only to the exhibits, to reflect your concern, correct concerns about the, the easement issue, but also the warranty deeds were modified as well to address that.
Yeah, that, that was, that was really the only issue I had with the item. Looks like a good plan to me, and I think the property we're getting is a much better use of the acreage that we need for the future than splitting it on either side of the street.
Definitely. Any other questions or comments? Like to open this up to public participation at this time, agenda item number nine. Anyone who'd like to make comments, ask questions, please come forward. Seeing none, back to the council for final questions, comments, or motion? Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This item passes, agenda item number nine. Okay, now we move to the public participation part of our meeting. Anyone wishing to make any statements or comments, or comments or questions in regards to any item, please come forward, state your name, and you will have three minutes. Few gentlemen, there we go.
Hi, my name's Carl Johnson. I live in the P section. I've lived in Palm Coast since June 1st of 2003. What I'd like to talk to is particularly Mr. Bob Cuff. I just got back from vacation a couple of weeks ago and saw in The Observer, a statement supposedly made by you, if it wasn't, and I quote, "I am not a fan of T-shirt politics in which residents all show up to meetings wearing the same color T-shirt to show support or opposition to an issue. I'd be happy to take your position into consideration, but I don't represent 50 people who all have 10 bucks to buy the same color T-shirt."
Please just direct your, your statements to me.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I would think that a politician would have a little more common sense to, to say something like this to a, a group of people who have an issue that they'd like to bring before the city council. And you may see five or 10 people sitting out with red, green, orange T-shirts, but in the background, I'll make you, give you an example. I was on the Friends of Golf Steering Community, or Committee, there was 16 of us years ago. Behind us, we had emails, we had a website of over 1,000 people who kept track of what we were doing with Mr. Landon and City Council to get that golf course open. That's a big voting block. My last comment is, Mr. Cuff, how many $10 T-shirts are we going to see when you're up for reelection? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Brian Rosen. I'm here in Cypress Knoll, Palm Coast. I'm new, I've only been here for a couple of years. Found this place by accident, and we're very happy we moved here. One of the things I did note, I belong to, it's called Next Door, I don't know how many of you know about that application, and a lot of people like to voice sometimes a little bit too much, but what's going on in the city? And I, for one, like to participate in our politics. This is my first meeting, and there's a reason for it here, and it comes to my request. I did write to you about this, I gave a little statistics here. I retired from the military, I've had the opportunity to live across many cities in this great country of ours, and Palm Coast is one of very few cities that have meetings in the morning. Over half your constituents in the voting rent block, well over half of them, work during the day. That's why I have not been at 10:00. 9:00 in the morning, I'm working. There's a lot of people who sat there and said that they would join. Now, I'm a little disappointed that we didn't have more people here, but I was really just focusing and asking if you would consider moving more of your workshops, and especially the city council meetings, to later date for those of us who are working, who can attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Charles here at Palm Coast. The gentleman just talked about the Next Door. I started some of that, about coming here, those meetings, our workshops are all at 9:00 AM. Yeah, we have a population of retirees here, and as you can see in our audience, we're about 100,000. And how many participating residents do we have here? It's a shame. There's things that are going on here. I've been at the workshops, I've made my comments and so forth, but everyone needs to get involved, okay? And I, that's what I put out for, and I put out, says, "Hey, guys, you got to get involved. For or against whatever we're decision, I'm not going to tell you yea or nay or this and that. I'm going to tell you what I feel like, you decide for it and go on." Now, the one thing that's been my pet peeve, and I've already turned in those affidatas last workshop, unfortunately, it looks like Waste Pro is not going to fulfill their voice. And I presume I have to talk to Barbara in code enforcement to start working on that thing, because unfortunately, the contract says $300 per incident, you got at least 17 affidatas stating that Waste Pro did it, then I guess they get to pay. And that's in the contract, under Section 15, subtitle U. Now, I don't know what the rest of it does as far as Palm Coast goes. Hidden lakes, only been developed roughly in 2007. And I counted 160 of skid marks. I'm a semi-truck driver and I'm a school bus driver. And what they're doing is they're operating their emergency brakes and not operating their foot pedal. And once the, the emergency brake works on two ways, centrifugal, and then once it gets to a certain point after the centrifugal, then it locks it down. And if you come out and see the hidden lakes, every house has a skid mark, either 12 feet long, 5 feet long, 2 feet long, if, because they're not doing. Now, they've changed personnel, but it's the same thing, they're still doing it. They came out for the power washing companies, they haven't come back. And I talked to Mr. John, whatever his name's, saying it's supposed to be the operational manager and whatever, and I'm, I'm, I've had it with it. You know, if they're not going to fulfill like they said they were going to do in face-to-face with me, then we need to take the action that my affidavit states, so, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, my name is George Quatcalsey. I'm Commissioner for the East Flagler County Mosquito Control District. I'm not going to talk about mosquitoes today, I'll leave that for another day. I have read in the news lately that many people are being treated for an overdose for pain medication and opioids. I just got back from up north where they're using a kit called Narcon. This is, this is, training is for firemen, deputies, and first responders. This kit contains a nasal spray that is used to treat a patient on the site, possibly saving their life. Are we using these kits? I just read that a deputy in Volusia County saved somebody's life. Many Florida counties do already have them. Well, my second item is, many people in our city have Alzheimer's or other sort of dementia and wander away from their home. I read where there is a kit called Perstivation Senting. This kit is a swab-type bandage that a person rubs on their body and places in a jar for future use. If a person is lost, a special-trained dog sniffs the scent and tries to locate the person. Can we get these sets for family members? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. First thing I'd like to ask is, about two weeks ago, called the city, and I wanted to find out what the procedure was to put an American flag on my front lawn. American flag. Building Department. Building Department said you have to call zoning. Zoning says you have to call planning. Okay. I said, "At the end of the day, how much is the permit, or you have to get a permit." How much does it permit to put an American flagpole on your front lawn? $125 to dig a hole in the ground. I said, "You can't be serious." "Oh, no, that's not all." "What do you mean, that's not all?" "You have to come with a survey, you have to come with a schematic drawing of where you're going to put the pole, and inspectors got to come out and look at it." $125 to display my American flag, that a lot of these people gave, almost sacrificed their lives for so we could have an American flag. And this city says, $125 to dig a hole! That's all. So I'd like to know if we could somehow address that. Okay, we can do this. Unfortunately, the Observer newspaper has turned out to be like the rag sheet. Everybody's dirty laundry is getting dragged through. First, it was the mayor, then it was poor Ms. Calanda. Okay. So I have a couple of questions, because I only have a minute and a half. The question is, if the city does determine, in their wisdom, to terminate Mr. Landon's tenure, how much this is going to cost the city exactly to terminate him? If the city chooses not to terminate Mr. Landon, but to wait until the end of his contract, how much is that going to cost the city exactly? How much will it cost the city for a search committee? And who does his job in the interim? My next question is, Mayor Holland wanted Mr. Landon, what has Mr. Landon done since his raise, because the city unanimously gave him a raise only a few months ago?
What was that question, Mr. McDonald?
I wanted to know how much, what Mr. Landon has done to put him in the bad grace, because two months ago, or three months ago, the city unanimously agreed to give him a raise. Okay. And now that we're all in this mess, would the city possibly, and I guess the city attorney would be able to feed on this, to change the type of government that we have? Because unless I'm incorrect, if we continue to keep the same type of government that we have now, we're still going to be always behind the eight ball.
Got you. Next speaker, please.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. We have a lot of elderly people that are living in Palm Coast, and it's very difficult for them to attend a city council meeting where they have to wait to the end of all the business. If you could just maybe one day a month, have a meeting that maybe you could give them an hour, you know, and let, publish it and let them know that the elderly people will have the first say in, in the meeting. Just a thought.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Tim Gramlovitz, Palm Coast. I, I just have a couple of questions. I've just lived here two years, but I've been visiting here since the 80s. And one thing I've noticed, and really especially now, is Palm Coast is just so darn dark at night. night, you know, it's hard to find your way around, especially if you're new here visiting. And I've seen some articles in The Observer, but I'd like to know if the city actually has a plan in place and a schedule to install some more streetlights, especially on the main roads like Belter. And I guess that's about it. I'd like to know if there is a plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker. No one approaching, so we'll close public participation, and we'll start working on the questions. First, Mr. Cuff, would you like to make any comments?
I was going to make a comment during the council time, but basically, I, my point that I was trying to make, although I was accurately quoted from what I saw, was not that I like to discourage or want to ever discourage anybody, especially from showing up at one of these meetings and addressing us. The, what I was referring to is something I've seen literally dozens, perhaps literally hundreds of times, in a 40-year legal career, where discussion and debate on different public issues just degenerates into, we've got more people here with yellow T-shirts than you do with blue T-shirts, so we should win. But to the extent that my comments offended anybody or were taken to suggest that I don't like to see people coming here to address us, that was certainly not what I meant to say, so.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I might go out of order here as questions, but first thing is the, actually last and somewhere in the middle. As far as meetings in the mornings, or trying to change it to the night, and moving the participation time, we've already mentioned that, I believe, moving the participation time from the end to the beginning, but I think these two items need to be discussed. Mr. Landon, if we can squeeze them on a, on a workshop somewhere, so we can have a quick discussion and see what we can work out with that, and spread the joy with everybody, so everybody can come here and feel what we feel. Okay. Mr. Landon, I'll ask you, the American flag front lawn, so basically, I guess, the permit, it sounds a little excessive. I don't know. I'm trying, I understand the design, you know, we've got to see where it is, you don't want it out in the middle of the street.
It's obviously not the flag, it's the structure of the pole.
Right, exactly.
And making sure that that is sound, and, you know, when the high winds come through here, that it is, doesn't cause damage. And there's usually a lot more to this story, so I'd ask Mr. McDonald to get with Mr. Flanagan, and we'll figure out what the, what the issue is here, so we can get it taken care of.
Excellent. I'm going to switch over here. Okay, the Waste Pro, skid marks, so Waste Pro in Hidden Lakes. I did hear something about getting those pressure washed off the road. Are they going to do that? Have we spoken? I know, I know the gentleman spoke to them.
Yes.
But have we spoken to them?
I personally have spoken to them.
Okay.
And that was about making sure it doesn't happen again.
Yeah.
And I've not heard that it was happening, I mean, happened again. Waste Pro management obviously doesn't like to see this either.
Yes.
This is hard on their trucks, it's bad community relations. As far as cleaning them up, I've been told by my staff, they haven't mentioned it to me, Waste Pro representatives, that yes, they were working with them on, on a solution to get it cleaned up. That was a week ago, I didn't, didn't hear an update today.
We could find out, follow up on that.
Yep.
Also, would like to see those affidavits collected by the city and not do anything with them. Do you have them?
Yes, our attached councilman.
And, I mean, once we get them cleaned, I would like them to be, to be told, listen, if this happens again, now we're going to try and enforce this.
Absolutely, because then, at that point, if they keep doing it.
Right.
Then they're just ignoring us, and then that's when the fines need to be kicked in, so that they, they don't continue this bad behavior.
Sounds like a plan. Opioid kits, are we providing those? Not yet. Not at all. Not ever.
Okay, Fire Chief is saying it's in the works.
It's in the works, okay, it's in the works.
Both your EMS and law enforcement, but he's saying that, yeah.
We're in the works. What about this scent kit? Is that what, if I understand it right?
Why don't you, why don't you come up here and answer these questions?
Come on down, chief.
There you go. Yeah, bring your partner.
Let's get, let's get the first responders up here. All right.
I love these guys. Right here, these are the guys.
Just stand there, that's all right. The kits, we are working on the kits, it's not an easy, you just go out and buy them, it's got to get through the medical director.
Right, exactly.
But that's something new that's hitting the country. We're on top of it. We have altering medications that our paramedics, both in fire trucks and ambulance, can give, but it is a new, the kits, it's a new product out there, so I'm sure our medical director and our EMS team's on top of it.
Excellent.
And actually, to touch on what the chief said, our sheriff did talk at our last staff meeting, that he was looking into it also with some grant money and with EOC. So, the second item, we have had Alzheimer's training, but I, I'm not familiar with it.
Familiar with that yet, but we could look at, into that and see.
I'd have to look into it.
A tracking method is what it sounds like.
Absolutely.
Sounds good?
I do, chief.
I guess.
You both did very well, you're on camera. Thank you.
We can go now.
Dark, dark nights, yes, it's been dark here since I've been here in 1981, but it's brightening every day, and we do have a current program that, that's in effect right now.
Yeah, I always like to tell the full story.
Yes.
Let's do neighborhood lights first, the lighting inside the neighborhoods on, on the residential streets. We will have FPNL install. I probably need to back up. All the streetlights are owned and maintained by FPNL. Every time they put one up, then they add that to the city's bill, the electric bill for that. So, what our policy is, is that anytime someone would like a light installed at a intersection within a neighborhood, we'll request that. We go out and make sure that it meets our criteria, but it's really every, every intersection. Also in the neighborhoods, if someone wants a, what they refer to as a security light, they will, FPNL will do that at the request of the property owner for the, the power pole that's right there on the property line, you know, every other, every other corner, they have a power pole. So, that will be pointed towards your house or your property, and that, they will actually charge the resident, add it to, to their electric bill, it's about $10, $11 a month. So that's an option for people. The third program is what we call continuous lighting, or the lighting of our major thoroughfares. And this is something that all new streets we build or improve, we include the continuous lighting on those. So, you'll see that on, for example, Belter North has a continuous lighting, but Belter South, which was already four-lane before we became a city, does not. There's a few others where our major thoroughfares that do not have the lighting. And City Council has recently approved an engineering contract to design that continuous lighting, because that where you have to have somebody that designs it so that it's exactly that, continuous, and not light, dark, light, dark. That contract includes the design for lighting on Belter from Palm Coast Parkway all the way to State Road 100. Then, the second segment would be on Lakeview in the L section from Matanzas Woods Parkway up to the end of Lakeview where it curves and turns into London, I think, is, is the street. So, those two are in design. Also in addition to that is a master plan to determine what would be the next continuous lighting project that would be appropriate, and the engineering firm is going to make that recommendation to City Council with some criteria as to where we would continue to, with the program on our major streets. And then it's also a budget factor, and during our budget meetings, you're having to consider that, because every streetlight that goes up, there's obviously a charge for that, so, but it's in the current proposal for budget that City Council would have to approve for increasing. Currently, our streetlight budget is about $700,000. So, you know, we.
That's the lighting, but that's the electric bill.
That's, that's basically the electric bill. It includes some of the costs.
With the lease items and.
Yep, yep. So, hopefully that helps the gentleman that asked that, asked that question.
Thank you. So it's getting brighter. All right, now, as far as Mr. Landon's contract, he doesn't have a termination in his contract, so his contract isn't going to run out in a year or two or five, it's just at the pleasure of the council that he serves, and when, you know, one time or the other. The search and the type of government, how's that going to change? I really would like to leave those, we have a meeting, a special meeting on Thursday, where each council member is going to discuss what their, you know, what their opinions, ideas, their thoughts, what they're thinking. So, I don't want to speak for everyone, and I don't want everybody to speak now, because again, we're not all here, so I'd like to wait, if that's okay with you, Mr. McDonald, till Thursday, and if you can't be there, it'll be available in audio, so you can get all that information. As much as far as the cost to terminate, that I don't have, but I'll ask if anyone knows that number.
You can get back to me.
Huh?
You can get back to me.
I can get back to you.
Sure.
And I will, I promise.
You know where I am.
I know where you live. That's all right.
You know where I live.
Okay. And that finalizes our public participation, and I'd like to take it now to City Council. Discussion on matters not on the agenda. Mr. Cuff.
Well, I was going to talk about T-shirts, but I don't have anything further to say.
Okay, no T-shirts.
Nothing else for me tonight.
Clufus, nothing. Ms. Shipley.
I do. I just want to make sure that the old King's Road, we're looking at continuing that. I know we're looking for a special price on something to actually go down Old King's Road, temporary. They're still doing that since I left?
That was actually, the proposal was to include that in next year's budget, and at the workshop last, workshop last week, City Council asked that we not include that in the budget. So, at this point, we don't have any plans for that unless City Council agrees to put that back in the budget.
Okay. Well, that's disappointing. The other thing is Harlem Park, it's beautiful, everyone loves it. Every time I go there, there's more damage. I saw the damage to the gate, the bathrooms where you can actually look in the bathroom when people are going to the bathroom. Is there anything we can do? Well, first of all, we're going to fix everything, and I can send you a list of what I saw last night, but do we have a park, there was someone that was supposed to be there? I met him once, and then I didn't see him there again, but.
We have someone that visits all the parks, you know, not one dedicated to each park, but there is somebody that visits and, and during the day, and I'm not sure if it's at night also, but they just check it out. We also have our maintenance people there, and then, of course, law enforcement. In Harlem Park, we've, I've talked to Mark about having additional patrols. And then, what we also talked about is developing a security camera system there to try to catch people that are abusing, abusing the park. It's brand new, it's very visible, but I will tell you, it's common in all our parks. At one point or another, people just don't respect the, the property. And we will continue to do everything we can to try to minimize it, and anytime anybody sees this, if they would call the sheriff's office and report it, that would be extremely helpful. But we will, you know, continue to try to minimize it with the security cameras and just having staff in there as much as possible.
The gate, I think, is the most important thing to get done right away, because the little kids can get out that way now.
Oh, you're talking.
The entrance gate is actually broken, where you press down and push out.
Not, not to the park itself, but to the playground area.
Right. I guess that's the whole, right, to get into where the, the zip line is, over that area.
Yes, that's the playground area. That will be fixed tomorrow, because we have a policy, anytime we hear, that's a safety concern, that when we hear a safety concern, it will be taken care of within 24 hours. Only possible problem with that would be parts, but we'll do something to make sure that that gate will close, so the kids can't just come and go as they, as they please.
That counts.
City Attorney of Matters Not on the Agenda.
Nothing, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Finally, City Manager.
Yeah, I have to embarrass my favorite attorney. He's, he's turning 89 today. No, this is, this is Bill's birthday, so I thought.
It is my birthday, but also, but also it's Chris Quinn's birthday, too.
Yes, we know that.
So, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to be alone, and he likes to give me a hard time, so I am returning the favor. Happy birthday, Mr. Quinn.
Happy birthday to the both of you.
I was going to say, don't you think he looks good for 89?
I was going to say, he doesn't look a day over 88.
Yeah, okay, so.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Oh.
Public participation.
And then, you know, I don't have my cheat sheet here with Cindy, so I, I don't have anything else to.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn from any.
To adjourn?
We are adjourned.